I call the meeting to order. The selectmen have all agreed to appoint Representative Jeff to be the moderator for the town meeting.
I began my career out of college in Vanceboro and 48 years ago. It's hard to believe, so if anybody wanted to know why I've taken an interest, that's Just a short welcoming statement, and then I'll go over a few details of how the meeting's going to be run. Obviously, there's deep concern on both sides of the border regarding what is a proposal, and we're hoping tonight that the officials from the Customs and Border Patrol will hear the concerns of the citizens. We're going to have a structured, semi-structured agenda. First of all, I'll be introducing the port director from Callis, Mr. Gadway. He can talk to you for as long as he wants. Then I would like to ask Mayor Stanics of McAdam to come to the microphone and talk to you about what the impacts are going to do to our economy and other factors. And then I will come back to the podium, and we're going to do a public comment and question and answer period. Questions directed to Customs and Border Patrol, Mr. Gadway will field those questions. You're also free to just make a statement about this is how this is going to affect my life. So it doesn't have to be a question. It can be a statement. That's fine. I'm only asking one thing of everybody, to keep it civil and courteous. It's a difficult subject. You know, elder care across the border, jobs, employment, everything. There's reason for a lot of emotion, but do a good job, be civil, and make your points. If you have a copy of the agenda, the time limits are just estimates. Mr. Gadway, the man in Washington told me five to 10 minutes, but you can certainly go longer than that. Take as much time or as little time as you want. And then I promised during the question and answer period, questions that are directed to you, you can stand right up here with us and you just take right over and answer those questions. If you have a question, your board of select women are here. I work for them as a volunteer. I just want you to know that. There's no compensation. I'm just working as part of my work as a state representative. I did want to let you know that Senator Moore from Callis and Representative Javna from Chester are here, as is Barbara Hazlett from Congressman Jared Golden's office. And I do have a person here in the room who used to work here, Mr. McDonald, Jean McDonald. He worked in your schools, actually when I worked here, and he's going to be following up on me with Senator Collins.
Speaker turn it up any higher, we can't hear you back here.
I'll try, Hollis, but I think most people can hear me. Raise your hand if you can't hear me.
This man is the oldest citizen in the country.
I know he is. I read the article in Down East. So we'll try just to speak into the mic. But listen, if you're gonna, the way the question and answer is going to be going, there's no differentiation between a Canadian and American. You raise your hand, and you'll be called on. If you speak loudly, you'll speak from your seat. If we find that the people are having difficulty hearing, then you're welcome to approach the mic. Any questions? I will introduce Mr. Herm Gadway from Customs and Border Patrol, Port Director of Callis.
You guys are awful quiet. Well, thank you. Can you all hear me? Am I going into microphone, or am I just loud enough?
Speak into the microphone.
All right, I'll try. Just for your awareness, Ms. Hogan and I went to the academy together a million years ago. Well, not that long ago for you, but... So I have a statement I'm going to read, and just a few things I'm going to talk about at the beginning, and then I guess there's going to be a speaker in between, but then you folks can ask any questions you need, and I'll do my best to answer them. So, good afternoon, and thank you all for coming. The purpose of this meeting, it's to provide information about U.S. Customs and Border Protection's plans to reduce hours at the Vanceboro Port of Entry. I want to note right off that some of the languages that we're closing the port, hours of reduction is different than a port closure. So it's a potential, it's a hours, hours of reduction. So the agenda for CBP will be, we're going to provide information about the planned reduction of hours and reasons behind the reduction. We'll welcome your comments and feedback relating to the reduction of hours. We answer questions that we're able to answer, and if the media, I see there's a few media representatives here, you're going to have to put your questions to Ryan Berset, who's our Public Affairs Officer, at the end of the meeting. So I'm going to ask that you're all respectful. It sounds like Mr. Evangelos said the same, and I'll do the same back with you folks. The members from CBP here are Vanceboro Port Director Bonnie Jones, Callis Assistant Port Director Tim Corbett, Public Affairs Officer Ryan Berset, and my name's Herm Gadway. I'm the port director at Callis. No final decision on the reduction of hours will be made during the meeting. Formal notice will be given to the public at least 30 days prior to the reduction of hours. So the information is, U.S. Customs and Border Protection is a federal agency tasked with securing a nation's border and enforcing the border security laws of the United States. Part of this responsibility is to efficiently and effectively manage agencies' resources, staffing, and taxpayer funds. CBP is constantly evaluating its operations and making decisions according to better achieve its mission. The authority to set operating hours is assigned to CBP per the Code of Federal Regulations. So just some background, you all know Vanceboro is a small CBP port of entry in eastern Washington County. It's, to put it in distance, it's 57 miles from Callis on the U.S. way and 33 miles from Callis on the Canadian way. I just, I know there's a bunch of different numbers circulating. I know you've all driven it. I've driven it as well, but I map-quested it to get the numbers right. So that's what the mileage is. It's a permit port for commercial and formal entries and a rail commercial port for, that currently accepts trains daily 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. CBP Vanceboro is planning to reduce hours to 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. daily, effective a date in September, tentatively September 10th at 8:00 p.m. in the evening, once port hardening construction is complete and formal notice is given. This reduction of hours is based upon CBP's efforts to better align resources with threats, current traffic volume, and trends at the Vanceboro Port of Entry and consultation with Canada Border Services Agency. The three reasons why Vanceboro was selected as a candidate for reduction hours are, the first one is Vanceboro is a low-volume traffic port, especially within the planned hours of reduction. The Boston Field Office continues to align operating hours at Port of Entry to reflect traffic patterns, demonstrate fiscal responsibility, and to place employees where they can be most useful. The reduced hours are based upon low traffic volumes and to better allocate CBP officers to traffic times. Overall traffic in Vanceboro is declining. Vehicle traffic figures from 2014 to 2019 show close to a 50% reduction in traffic. Vehicle traffic has historically been low during the hours of 8:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m., both pre-COVID and throughout the pandemic travel restrictions. 2017 to 2019 traffic figures were used to calculate annual averages. Those were the numbers that we used to calculate the numbers, 2017 to 19, before the pandemic. And these pre-pandemic figures include an average of 7.4 private vehicles and .6 commercial vehicles over the 12 hours of planned reduction. Currently, Vanceboro is averaging three vehicles per day in calendar year 2022 during the proposed hours of reduction, and in 89% of all private vehicle traffic crosses between 8:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. Staffing Vanceboro has become, the second reason is staffing Vanceboro has become increasingly difficult. Ever since 2017, to recruit CBP staff in Vanceboro have been mostly unsuccessful, and the port has not been able to achieve full staffing for some time. None of the CBP officers assigned to the Port of Vanceboro live in Vanceboro, and all but one commute a significant distance. The Callis Port, the Callis Port of Entry provides significant staffing to cover Vanceboro shortages. Staffing is provided from Callis regularly, including full-time temporary duty assignments that have been in place for several years, and also daily trips to Vanceboro from Callis CBP staff. This has averaged thousands of hours annually and required Callis CBP staff, who are not Vanceboro employees, to cover shortages that occur almost every day at high agency expense. As a matter of fact, most days, we send two different, either two vehicles, two groups of people, but two times, we send someone up here to Vanceboro. The last reason is increase in rail traffic and need to align staffing to meet mission requirements. I'm sorry. I'll try, I'll try to be a little louder. Is that better?
Culture is better.
Okay. It's just a little weird. Rail container traffic has increased in the last several years with an increase of 35% since 2018. Railroad stakeholders have notified Maine area port management of an expected fourfold increase in rail containers, both in and outbound, in the coming years, with a large increase already starting in June of 2022. Vanceboro staffing does not support rail inspections at current or future container railcar levels. Personnel currently assigned to operate the port during the planned reduction of hours, which is 8:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m., will be reassigned to hours in which the POE accepts rail traffic. In summary, port personnel will be moved from times that have very low and downtrending traffic to times with higher passenger traffic and increasing rail traffic. I want to let you know that Vanceboro is only one of many ports that was selected for a reduction of hours. Currently, in Maine and Vermont, there are 19 ports who have either reduced hours or are running less than 24/7 operations. This is part of CBP efficiently and effectively managing its staffing and resources to workload. CBP is and has always been a large part of the Vanceboro community, and has not taken this process lightly. I'm just glad it wasn't mine ringing. It has considered all factors, including the impact to local residents. Although traffic has been consistently very low, there will be people affected by the reduction of hours. CBP has made efforts to mitigate impacts, including making arrangements with first responders to cross during hours of reduction, utilizing a secure access process. And the Vanceboro POE has also been in discussion with Canada Border Services Agency for contingency plans related to border security functions. So that's, that's all I have for my written statement. I guess it will be back to me in a few minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gadway. I did neglect to introduce Mr. Ryan Berset. Could you stand, please? For the, for the members of the media that are here, he will be your go-to person after the meeting to field your questions. And without any further ado, I'm going to introduce Mayor Stanics of McAdam.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, everyone. Happy to see you all here tonight. This is a pretty important topic to most of us. So first off, I'd like to, I'll break mine into two parts. First one's going to be the personal aspects, and then the business aspects will be number two. So in the first part, we all know somebody, we all have, not all, but most, have relatives or friends that live on both sides of the border. A reduction in service will negatively impact your ability to move freely back and forth between the two countries. That's number one. Number two, we have relatives who are ill on both sides, and that's going to negatively impact your ability to move back and forth. To look after those people, because sure enough, as soon as they shut the border down, you're going to get a call from your aunt, your mother, your sister, saying, "I need somebody to come and look after me," and you're not going to be able to get over. That's going to be difficult to take. I was glad to see that there's a system that's going to be put in place for the fire and the ambulance services that we provide that come across the border into Vanceboro. So I'm glad to hear that you've thought about that, and you've got some idea of how you're going to run that. On the business side, there is huge growth that's going to be taking place in this area over the next two to four years, maybe five. And it's all about the growth in the changing patterns of trade in the world that's taking place right now. So what you're seeing is you're seeing the ports like New York, Vancouver, Seattle, San Francisco. Those ports are all being clogged with ships, and they can't get the goods off the ships inland, where you can buy it, and because they can't get it off the ships and into where the stores need it, you're seeing inflation. So what's happening in St. John is that DP World came into St. John, they started talking to St. John a couple of years ago. You saw St. John grow from 100,000 TEU, which is a container, a TEU is a container, 20-foot, so a 40-footer is two TEU. Just want to get that clear. So they've gone from 100,000 TEU to an expansion of 300,000 TEU over the last two or three years. That has cost about $250 million to make that happen. CP has upgraded their line from Montreal into Maine at the tune of $90 million to take advantage of that trade that's going to be coming in through St. John. New Brunswick, NB Southern, NB Maine, they've just taken on a $42 million project to improve the rail lines between St. John and McAdam. They are building rail yards in McAdam almost as we speak, and they're going to do the same thing in St. John. They're going to be putting trains together that are two miles long, and right now, those trains are running at about 170 cars apiece. I shouldn't say apiece. There was one today or a few days ago that came across at 170. But it gives you an indication of the trade that's going to be taking place. CSX in the States just bought Pan Am Railways in April/May timeframe for around $100 million, and they're upgrading that line. When they talked to their transportation equivalent of our Transportation Safety Board, they talked about St. John, when they were doing that briefing, about 16 times, because St. John is going to be the port on the East Coast. The province and the federal government have already announced that that port is going to expand from 300,000 TEU to 800,000 TEU in the next two or three years. So right now, you're getting two trains a day coming from St. John, going up to Montreal and point south. We haven't hit the 300,000 TEU mark yet. So when we hit 800,000 TEU, if there's two trains a day each going each way, you just do the simple math, 300 to 800, it's almost three times as many trains that are going to be required to move that material back and forth. Logisticians would talk to you about the intricacies of that, but I'm just going to stay on the, on the broad scope. Along with that is going to come growth. You have a place like McAdam. You take a look at St. John. St. John has limited space for growth. Who's going to get that growth? McAdam's right on the main line. Potentially, it could be us. If it is us, then it's going to affect Vanceboro in a big way, because we're going to get hundreds of jobs, and a lot of the people that are going to be working there, my mouth is just drying right up. A lot of the people that are going to be working there could potentially be coming from Vanceboro. And if they come from Vanceboro, Vanceboro is going to benefit, and we will have growth here as well. And that means the work that's going to be going on over there will be done 24/7, which means people have to be able to get through that port. They can't be driving down to Callis and then driving up to McAdam to go to work. Thanks, Jeff. I appreciate that. So in essence, what I'm trying to get at, right now, the numbers reflect that there's not very much going across the border, and I agree with that. It's true. The numbers aren't going to lie to you. They're going to tell you what is going to be coming across. But in two years' time, there's going to be so much traffic potentially coming back and forth across there. If McAdam grows the way I think it will, you will have transport trucks coming across that border. They're not going to want to drive down to Callis and down the coast, not when they've got a clear shot coming right through here, and it's going to be 24/7. It's not going to be eight hours or 12 hours a day. So we have to be very careful when we talk about closing or shutting down hours at this site. We've got major companies that are investing $700 million to make this a port that's going to be a happening place. And so I just wanted to make sure that everybody understands that, put that out there for consideration when you're making your decisions on the closure. And thank you very much.
Some important information there of a scale that none of us had imagined. And when you're talking about jobs on both sides of the border, you're talking my language. So thank you for bringing that to the authorities' attention. So, you know, when I work in Augusta, we don't do anything when a bill is proposed. The first thing we do is we hear from the public. We hold a public hearing, and that's what we're doing tonight. We hear from you. So we want to hear your concerns, and we want to hear your questions. Mr. Gadway will approach, and if there's a lot of questions, he can just stand up, and I'll move aside. So the floor is open. It's yours. It's your meeting, and anyone can raise a hand and direct their question or their comment to the podium. Go ahead, folks. Yes, sir?
I have a letter that I'd like to read.
You're welcome to.
I'm John Kilbright. I'm originally from McAdam, and I still live in McAdam. I work for an American company called Herbert C. Haynes, H.C. Haynes, at a wind main. And I was asked to read this letter tonight. It's to whom it may concern. Reduction of hours at your Vanceboro border. H.C. Haynes at a wind main has been a forest product buyer and an employer internationally for the last 59 years. The flow of forest products through the VanceboroMaine border, St. Croix-New Brunswick border, excuse me, border, has been an ongoing thing for the entirety of these 29 years. The products of spruce and furlongs to the softwood mills, hardwood logs and chips to the pulp mill, as well as the biomass products to the power plants, excuse me, have been essential to the American as well as the Canadian economy. The Route 6 quarter is the shortest route to many southern towns for these products to flow through, and by using your GPS system, it is the shortest way. 15 years ago, when the U.S. and Canadian government decided to restrict all the commercial at this border, that has put the Vanceboro border at a severe disadvantage. In saying that, you would only accept local commercial. But when you stopped the lumber trucks and everything going, that was detrimental. That's number one. I'm sure there has been much data and numbers studied to come up with your reasoning for closure, but on saying that, did you take into account that the numbers over the last two to three years have declined? There's no question about that, due to COVID and everything. No one was allowed to cross the border during these times. So yes, you have gotten a very low count. For over 100 years, trucks and trains have carried commercial goods through this port. I believe with some consultation with all the stakeholders, review the stats and possibly look at maybe a four-hour closure, or would it be six? 12 hours is unacceptable. That closure would be a less blow to both communities in traveling public and the commercial traffic could possibly work within these timeframes. I understand that business is tough in times like this, but by putting up gates and fences, you're sending the wrong message. The hardships that this closure will cause will affect not only the commercial traffic, but also the local residents that have to travel a much further distance to get to their jobs or us delivering the goods. With the price of fuel going up almost every day, this will have a huge impact on many And in saying that, as of Thursday last week, at 4:00 in the morning Canadian time, at 3:00 American time, within 15 minutes, there was seven trucks loaded with spruce logs going to Pleasant River Lumber in Dover-Foxcroft and Enfield. Nobody's seen them going in the middle of the night, but that revenue's going. And, and exactly, there's a pipe plant that they take pipes through. That's local commercial traffic that we're using, but we lost all the, the real commercial So I have this letter from Herbert C. Haynes Jr., and I'd like for you guys to have a copy of this. And Woodland Pulp has also asked me to read a letter that they couldn't be here tonight, and I will give you that as well. And this is from Steve Flette, the procurement officer. On behalf of the 450 men and women at St. Croix Chippin, St. Croix Tissue, and Woodland Pulp, we appeal to the U.S. Customs and Immigration Agency of the Department of Homeland Security to reconsider the announcement, excuse me, nighttime closure of the Vanceboro Port of Entry. We ask that in the name of the continuing this vital link for our supply chain for both modes of transportation, rail and truck, flow international, let the flow international in commerce. Additionally, we remain concerned for the health and welfare of all the area residents, which have, which are employees. They have families on both sides of the border concerning that the adverse impact this planned night closure will have on them. Respectively submitted, Steve Flette. And I have another question. I guess, having been on village council in McAdam for 23 years and no stranger to the area, with many governments or associations, when they make decisions, they don't come and talk to the stakeholders. And before yous make decisions, you need to get out and see how the impact is going to hurt people. And I really would like to see is consider, consider something better than 12 hours? And we don't have, when we have trucks coming through Vanceboro heading to Pleasant River Lumber, it is certainly out of our way to drive to Holton or Callis. And, and, you know, and that's just the log trucks, and that's the pipe trucks, every commerce that's going through here. We don't have that advantage. And you're, and Route 6 is the shortest route, and you custom officers know, you might see a car at 3:00 in the morning coming from New Jersey going to Prince Edward Island, or coming back from New Jersey going to Prince Edward, because this is where the GPS sends them. You need to reconsider, but thank you.
Mr. Kilbright, thank you. Do they have copies of both the letters? Okay, thank you. Who's next? Go ahead, ma'am.
Will the Callis ambulance have access to Vanceboro?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And I'm speaking from experience. Twice I have had, they've had to call the ambulance again. My son carried me out and put me in the vehicle and took me as far as the church. If they had not been allowed to do that, I wouldn't be here today. Are they going to be able to do that? No. If you're closed from 8:00 at night to late in the morning, if I have a heart attack at midnight, are they going to be able to take me and meet the ambulance so that I don't die? Do you have an answer? Thank you.
That was more of a statement than a question? You all sat?
They always would let us go through. Is that, are you still going to be able to do it?
I'm sorry, you're asking me if your son could come from Canada or your son could go into Canada?
Oh, yeah.
Could go into Canada?
Yeah.
So you have to...
Stay in Florida. The Canadian border's not closed?
Well, I can't speak for that. I mean, I'll speak with the Canada Border Services Agency about that.
Okay, I have another question.
Yes, ma'am.
A few years ago, in a bad accident, I was slammed right there. I was on my way home from the bank. When I got to Trumpsville, they told me, you wanted to home, you're down through Callas and up through St. Croix. That was at 9:00 at night. If it happens tomorrow and you're closed, am I going to have to sit on the American side down here though? Well, no.
I think we would look at something like that. If, I mean, you're talking about something that happens not very regularly. It would be a one-off thing, you know, over several years. I would think that if you had an emergency like that or traffic was blocked off for a long period of time, that, you know, we could speak with Canada Border Services Agency and consider staffing for something like that. That's an extreme thing to happen. Certainly, we'll look at humanitarian issues as they come up, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Kilbride did make a good suggestion, folks. And maybe after this meeting is concluded and people put some thought into it, that a stakeholder group together that Mr. Kilbride suggested could sit down and negotiate a better outcome. So, I would think that's a good suggestion, sir. Who's next? Go ahead, ma'am.
Whose decision is this? Is this your decision or is it the government's decision? Or is it a bill that's going into Congress? Who decides this?
Well, it's not a bill. So, we are employees of the government. So, this has support, like I mentioned, CBP's reviewing its operations at all ports all the time, and it has been approved through Lowick, PD Jones, me, Callas, right up to the executive assistant commissioner.
Now, if we get a decision going, could we stop us?
I don't know. We certainly will consider any feedback that you have. That's the point of the meeting today. And there'll also be a polling mailbox set up for you to put my email, any concern you have.
You said that this has already been approved, so this is just a reality if that's going on? So, this is already, doesn't matter what we do or what we say, is that what's?
No, that's not accurate. The plan, you have to go through a plan to do a reduction in hours. You can't just say, hey, tomorrow, you know, I'm closing the port. So, the authority is for customs and border protection through the Code of Federal Regulations, the CFR. So, the agency does have the authority to reduce hours. Notification, the requirement is 30 days to the public and congressional stakeholders. We try to, and this one is tough, and I, it's a tough one because it required port hardening construction. So, you mentioned the gates at the port. You have to have gates if you're going to have any reduction. You can't just walk away from the port and not have a gate. So, the problem with that is we can't, we're going to tie down the date exactly, and it takes a while for that construction, any government construction takes a while. So, that's those sort of processes. But before you initiate it, you know, your proposal has to be approved, and then, you know, you consider impact from the local stakeholders before, before, and that's a part of this meeting.
Okay. I was just wondering, it sounds like it was already?
It is, it's still right.
Mr. Gadway, I understand what you're saying. Just like, having worked with governors, and it takes quite a while to get a tenant out, and then, so it's obviously that this just wasn't thought of last night. The gates are all up and everything, but I guess what I'm asking is, should, could we not have the stakeholders involve all the people that's involved, how it's going to affect them, and then decide when you're going to open the closure gates? You folks have decided right now, you know, we need to have consultation, and then the shareholders, stakeholders can support what you folks are saying, and you liked it. And government officials, you know, back 20 years ago, when the Canadian government wanted to shut down, you folks didn't want us, so they didn't do it. And I hope that there is a member of parliament from Canada here, but I don't see anybody. But, you know, it's a shame that this is all, I mean, everybody's seen the gates going out, but, you know, it's kind of closing the barn door after the horse run away here. So, I hope this will reconsider and seriously have, like, because there's so many stakeholders that this could involve.
Mayor Stanek?
Yeah, just to make another point, as soon as I heard that this reduction in hours was going to take place, I reached out to the St. John Port Authority to alert them. I talked to NBM to alert them. I also reached out to John Williamson, who is a member of parliament for us over in McAdam, and I also reached out to Kathy Wachus. And that was probably, I heard this about a month or so ago. I didn't realize this meeting was taking place until just last week. Someone showed me the advert for it. So, I did reach back out to John and Kathy. They were both busy with other meetings that they had pre-arranged for themselves. I will be talking to John Williamson tomorrow morning at 10:00 as to how this meeting goes so that we can have his input and the national one.
That's great, Mayor. Thank you very much. Who's next?
I just wanted to make a statement that I travel daily to Canada. I mean, you can, I work in Dallas, I work at Callas Walmart. And the last two years, having to travel the American way, I put over 10,000 miles extra on my vehicle. That's mileage on my vehicle, my tires, extra oil changes, more gas, and it won't affect me in the major way.
$5 gasoline adds up in a hurry, ma'am.
Yes.
Thank you for that. Who was next? I saw another hand. Go ahead.
I was just wondering, is the third crossing that you have in Callas and St. Seating being what that, the one that's already reduced hours? If you're looking for staffing, why couldn't you close that down? You already have two other border crossings.
That's absolutely correct. We need that one? No, no, at all?
Why would you need three crossings in one area?
So, you're asking me?
I'm asking you, is that border up for consideration?
So, CBP's reviewing operations at every port. The Milltown Port of Entry has already been reduced by 16 hours. And I can tell you that all the ports at Callas have significantly more traffic than Vanceboro does. I want you folks to keep in mind that it's more than just the traffic. It's the two other factors that we brought up. And I hope you, you know, sir, you just mentioned, you know, that we were using pandemic numbers. That's not true. I said specifically we weren't. We're using 2017 to 2019 numbers. And even before that, 2014 to 2019, the traffic had been cut half prior to that. So, the numbers are what they are, and we're not using pandemic numbers at all.
But what she's saying is, they have three borders. You have one. Wouldn't it be fair to close one of their borders and leave this border open?
We're not closing any ports.
Well, they're already reducing hours.
They have already reduced hours at Milltown, 16 hours.
I want you to realize that almost everyone here has relatives on both sides of the main. And I have a very father that is very close, and I would get arrested if I had to go see him. Put it this way, I love my family, and I will do whatever I have to do. Just saying.
Go ahead, ma'am.
What communication have you had with Canadian Border Service about closing this border? If they're going to close their border?
Jeanne, we have had communication with them, but I can't.
Pardon? You've got to speak louder.
I said, Jeanne, thank you for the question. Yes, we have had communication with them, but I can't speak for Canada Border Services on what their plans, you're going to, I can't do it.
I'm not asking what they're going to do, but you have had communication with them?
Yes.
How far, now, this is harder, difficult. How far up the line? You know, like Portland, Boston, and then you know what that line to, that place called Washington? How far up the line was this decision made?
Well, I answered that question already. It went all the way up and down this port on every end of it.
All the way to Washington?
Yes, ma'am, and hopefully as well.
Okay.
Who made the proposal?
Who made the proposal?
All the ports are, have had their operations reviewed. So, as I mentioned, there's been 19 of them that have reduced hours just as a matter of alarm.
Could you please tell me what they are?
Yep, I can. I've got that, Jeanne.
You've got to come over here. I've got to live here.
I'm going to, if you guys mind, I'm going to move closer to Jeanne, we're all friends.
Okay, so, thank you for the question, Ms. Hogan. Thank you for the question. There have been 19 port of entries that are, have either reduced or have less than 24-hour operations. So, those are, in Maine, Milltown, Forest City, Limestone, Hamlin, Escor, Orient, Bridgewater, St. Palmfield, St. Zachary, St. Orly, St. Just, and in Vermont, Derby Line Route 5, North Troy, Alberg Springs, Morse's Line, West Berkshire, East, Richford, Pittsburgh, and Penaham.
Okay, so, Forest City and Orient, they were always closed at night.
Yeah, so I.
That was 57 years ago. This might fly the north of Orient for some, and so I know what it's like there.
Right, so, I don't know the exact hours at each one of those, but I just, I researched the other day which ones have less than 24 hours and have been either reduced or have that less than 24 hours. So, those are within it.
And what are the other, what is the distance between the borders there? That, I think that's what the biggest concern is here, is like, your only border crossings from here are Callas and Holton. That's a long distance between one and the other.
Forest City and McAdam.
Yeah, it's 33 and 57 miles. I don't know all of them. I mean, I'd have to research that. I mean, we can, we can look into that and get back to you if you'd like. You can put, maybe. So, each port, I guess the point behind this is each port is different, has different issues. You know, we have three issues here. You know, nobody wants to talk about the other issues that we're mentioning, but they are factors. You know, we do have a staffing issue here. That's a big one. We literally roll people out from Callas every day here.
Too much staff here anyways, I think. You do three of them sitting inside, two of them sitting in the window. Why you need five people sitting? You know what I mean? It's true.
One at a time, ma'am.
It's nine o'clock. You've got two people on each shift.
I can't talk about what our staffing numbers are, so we're not allowed to do that. So, you can think what you want, Jeanne, on it, but I can't, I can't tell you what it is. What I can tell you on it, though, is that, you know, we're talking about the rail. Mr. Mayor, you mentioned the rail, but we're trying to service the rail industry by having our people that are on duty for these 12 hours that we don't have cars coming. So, everybody can talk about, they want to go there, they want to do that.
You have to do the rail. Why can't you just keep someone there?
Well, you can't do the rail and the port at the same time, ma'am. That's what I'm saying is, if the port is open, then, if the port is open, then the officers can't be inspecting the train. And if they're inspecting the train, it can't be at the port, so.
That's securing. This is securing our port. Shouldn't we have somebody come there? I mean, come on, guys. Get in at one time so somebody can boil it up? Yes. Is that part of American history?
So, we can just ensure, we all want to hear what you have to say, and I don't want to stay. Wendy's going to make a statement, just let her finish, and then I want to hear everything you have to say. I mean, I want to make sure we just get every.
One at a time, please. And I think he's answered the last question. I think one of the things I heard after Mayor Stanek spoke was that the port director indicated that they're going to take this information back and consider it. And so, things are still open. Is that a fair summation?
Yeah, every combat moving in center, absolutely.
And Mr. Kilbride's idea of getting some people together, and I'm not sure that Customs and Immigration has a clear picture of the economic forces that are heading this way, so I think the stakeholders could help you with that. Who's next? Okay, go ahead. And please, folks, you know, I. Okay, wait a second. I just, I promised the federal people that, you know, it would be one at a time, and we'd be courteous, and I have to, please do that for me, okay? Go ahead.
Regarding the economic impact in the future that may happen to 800,000 cars, and they stay at 300, is there a procedure that if it changes drastically, we can reevaluate this?
Good question. And that's a great question. Absolutely. If, so, in ideal world, right, Vanceboro would be a booming city. There would be people coming here. We would be able to get people at work here. They'd come and move here and raise their families and get your school open again. But that's not the world we're in. It's very slow traffic. There's seven cars per 12 hours at night, and our, the focus is on the rail. The increase in traffic is on the rail. That's where there's growth right now. But absolutely, if conditions change, if this really happened, Mr. Mayor, if this happened, that, you know, McAdam became a big growth area, and Vanceboro had hundreds of employees going over there, that's the point of CBP to review for efficiency and effectiveness. And that's exactly what we're doing right now. So, yeah, yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Who's next? Okay, you want the mic, Cheryl? You're good there.
I don't want the mic. Can I have your mic? Yes. As far as the 18-wheeler's commercial people come at night, how come some of these aren't allowed to come anymore? The cars are trapped, how come?
I didn't, I'm not aware of that. I didn't know there was a change.
I thought there were some that couldn't, wasn't allowed to come over here anymore through this, through this room. Do they only take, like, logs, chips, or everything along?
Oh, yeah. Well, Vanceboro's a permanent port, and it takes, it doesn't have, it's not a commercial service port, but that, I don't know when that happened. You said 20 years ago or something like that?
13 to 20.
I wasn't aware of that change, ma'am. I wasn't toward right there at that time.
So, how come we're not a commercial port? Is the CBP trained the same as Callas, Vanceboro, everywhere?
Well, I guess, yes, our officers could work it out. There's special designations for each permanent port, for permanent versus commercial port, and I could look into the difference for you. I don't have the answer right now.
Because I know people in McAdam, they pay so much per trip or so much for the sticker for the year. Can anybody get that or just certain people?
I'm not sure I can. I guess I wasn't aware of that change. But I'll look into it, and I can get back to you at any time.
How about as far as the train goes? Like, they're only going to be able to run D to E. The train never runs on time. I used to work in the railroad. And it's been restricted on the railroad for the last 10 years, not just the last couple years. They've had certain time limits, and if they can't make it, they can't come. They have to wait 12 hours. That's putting the ground shaking on everybody's hours is screwed up because the train may come. Doesn't the train pay a certain fee for these trains to come into the safe?
Okay, so, I think you asked a bunch of things at once. I want to make sure I did it right. So, yes, the train has a window of 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. that they can arrive for CBP inspectional services. And we will inspect them during that time under the current traffic levels. Outside of those hours, there is, one of the rail stakeholders has entered into a plan called the reimbursable services program where they can pay for inspectional services. But it's not 100%. It depends on our staffing level. But I can tell you, this factor of the rail traffic, us trying to address the rail traffic is significant because it goes back to, if our limited staffing is managing the port of entry, waiting for cars that honestly aren't coming very often, you know, we're having a car every two hours over that time, then they can't inspect the train. We can't rely on Callas staff. It's not their port. So, part of the reasons for the reduction in hours is to put those resources when the train's supposed to come. And you're right, there are delays. It's the industry. I'm not going to speak on for the rail, but that's the point of it. So, the answer, I guess, is we're trying to put our resources towards when they're scheduled to come. There is provision where they can pay for services if they're outside that time within reason within our staff. We're hoping to be able to better support the rail industry to help the growth around here. That's our goal. our goal.
Now, if they're, if it's in the works that they are gonna pay for the trains, and trains get three times of what they are now, can't, where's that money going? Can't that money be used to support our officers at night? Instead of paying our officers from Callas to come here, why can't they just be there already?
I guess I'm not sure of the question you're asking. So, I'm sorry, it was-
In the railroad, who's gonna pay to bring the train across? Where's that money going? Their plan for what?
Okay. So, uh, the reimbursable services program is a partnership with CBP and stakeholders who request inspectional services. I can't, it, there's a lot to it. I can't explain it very simple, except for, to simplify it, you know, they ask for our services, and if we can support it, we will, we will do it, and then they can pay for those services. If it was exponential growth, then it probably wouldn't work off what we have in agreement right now. What we have now is overtime for officers in a small windows. But say, you know, say we're getting twenty trains a day or something like that, then they would, I think we would go back to the drawing board with that and consider adding position-specific. Our team had positions, uh, say a stakeholder want a lot, they could actually pay for positions, uh, at, say, the rail yard full-time. I don't know if the stakeholder would be interested in that. That's, that's a lot hypothetical, but it's kind of what you're asking me is, could they do that? Now, can they pay for positions at the port? I don't think that's the spirit of the, of the agreement. I think the spirit is for them to pay for the services. If we had extra staff and we evaluated traffic or there was some need, we would look at that.
Now, how many people are staffed and manned for them?
I, I can't tell you that. There's not a lot of staff.
I could just ask my head, because I know a lot of people.
That's right.
Is there any restrictions in Callas that people they can't travel at night, or?
Is there any restrictions as far as-
The border goes from twenty-four seven. Is there any restrictions for anybody because of staff? When they're not, I don't know, years ago, we didn't give immigration, no immigration officer, I don't think they couldn't have advanced one. Is there any limitations in Callas?
No, I mean, they can't go through Milltown during the reduced hours.
Now, can Callas justify, will their numbers keep the three borders open? You're closing one at night, but can you really justify the traffic to keep Milltown open at all?
Well, I would, I would say we can. I mean, it's, it's what it is. We're evaluating it all the time, and the new port was just built there a couple of years ago. There's a lot of factors in it. But I, you know, like I said, they have reduced hours here already, and this isn't a contest of, uh, you know, Vanceboro versus Milltown. I know that's not what we're trying to do here. But every port is upon local management to evaluate, to be efficient and effective, and we are constantly doing that. And CBP is nationwide as well, ma'am.
We have that too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Yes, sir.
I got a question. That new port that was built-
Yes, sir.
-in Callas, how many vehicles go through that port in the course of a day? I see-
I don't have-
Two, four, that's it.
I don't have the number with me right now.
Well, if you had any rough idea, just a ballpark figure.
It's, uh, four over a thousand vehicles per day across through three bridges in Callas by-
I wonder if-
Which one are you talking about?
The new one that's built.
Uh, well-
Not that one.
What about the big one?
The big one.
The big one?
Well, they feel, they'll-
Yeah, uh, I have some-
I'm maybe the seventh person behind, or waiting for you.
Right.
So I'm just wondering.
I, I don't have the number specifically for it. It is our commercial center as well. All of our-
You got trucks on?
Yes, all of our commercial traffic has to go there. That port has to remain open for seven because they're a commercial center.
Who's next? Right there, sir.
I have a couple of questions. Um, since nine eleven, people have been very apprehensive across the border either direction. People are very purpose-driven. They don't vote for Callas unless they're on business, or they have a specific job to do or person to see. When I was a kid, we used to come to Vanceboro and get ice cream. People from Vanceboro go to the cabin to go swimming, and all kinds of things. So, would it be fair to say that the numbers are down in all ports across the Canada-US border?
Absolutely.
Or is it unique to this border?
Uh, I, I started answering before you finished. I apologize. Uh, no, they're down. Uh, as far as every port, I wouldn't say that, but definitely, uh-
But it is a train.
And since two thousand ten, the numbers are down, uh, at most of the ports, certainly in our area, absolutely.
Okay, and one other question. Are you planning to restrict the movement of people in both directions or just coming in? Either, I guess, at the tail end of that, if you're reduced to twelve hours, a lot of truck drivers, and people like me, I, I'm an importer and an exporter. I do both. I bring things in, I take things back. So if I come to the US and I make it over here at eight o'clock in the evening, and I have business somewhere in Maine or whatever, am I still gonna be able to come back? There's a border closed in both directions. Is it gated? So I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying I'd be trapped, but if, if coming back across the border after hours to Canada, is it out of the question?
I would say that it would be, you probably wouldn't be able to go, because there's, there's two pieces to it. There's us, and then there's Canada border services, Canada direct to ourselves. Uh, but generally, you're part of our port security. We're not gonna have people right in our port area.
Okay, traditionally, I don't have any reason to stop at the US Customs, but I don't know, unless I have business to do, whether it's importing a vehicle or whatever, so.
They have a stop sign there.
So, I, I did, I did see that. I just wondered if that was, if that gate was there, used during that twelve-hour shutdown period. So Canadians returning to New Brunswick from Maine were basically, were clipped at the twelve-hour mark as well?
Yes.
Because I, I worked for customs in Orient thirty years ago, and it was eight hours a day, but the runs outside was twenty-four. So basically, everybody scurried over before the US border closed. They could go to Holton, Bangor, or whatever, and go home at midnight, and the Canadian customs was very accepting. And I wondered if that's even possible. Why, why weren't they clipped and dropped in both directions?
It's, uh, it's tough, because I can't really speak for Canada border services agency, and they may have the missing piece here. So.
Okay, who's next? Mr. McDonald.
Yeah, I'm a little bit surprised, I can say, to propose.
Um, I, I don't know that I have dollar figures on it, sir.
Do you run?
I, I'm not gonna do that. I'm not gonna make a rough guess. I can tell you that it's, uh, it'll be twelve hours, uh, whatever our staffing would be for twelve hours every day, seven days a week, three hundred sixty-five days a year, uh, you know, with that staff going to be, and we would redirect it towards a shift when the rail traffic is increasing. And hopefully, we won't have to staff it with Callas people as much as we have been over the past several years.
You wanna follow up? Go ahead.
To confirm the impact of what Mr. Stanek said, was you aware of American-
I think, I think the mayor is speculating a little bit, and I hope he's right. But I think he's saying, I hope, you know, so we do have, we know that the, the port in, in St. John is increasing traffic, and it was one of our talking points, one of the reasons why we're gonna reduce hours to address that. But as far as, you know, this being McCadam becoming the new big city in, in eastern, uh, I'm sorry, western New Brunswick, I hope it is, sir, I really do. And we'll be glad to reevaluate at that time. But I don't know. I mean, it's, it's, I don't know if the, that, that the growth will be in McCadam, hundreds of jobs from Vanceboro. I don't know that. I hope, I hope you're right, though, sir.
Um, just for the record, I, I do know that the Canadian government, uh, has joined with the, uh, private, uh, corporations, uh, to do just what the mayor said. So, um, I don't think that part is speculation. It may take some time for the growth, uh, to come, but it, it is coming. Who's next?
If the select management in Vanceboro hadn't called this meeting, would the customs have done that for public transportation?
We, uh, we went about a three-week period all the way to Washington DC to negotiate a meeting where everyone could come and it would be public. And, uh, the person in Washington was fair and decent, and we worked out an arrangement. But the bottom line is, um, I'm being perfectly honest with you, Gene. If I hadn't come up here fishing five weeks ago, we probably wouldn't be sitting here today, but I'm just being honest. Who's next?
Go ahead, Mr. Kilbride.
Did you get that? Gadway, was it?
Gadway.
Gadway. Uh, in your hiring practice for the new customs office-
Yes.
-for a more difficult, is your, can you actually tell somebody you have to work here, you have to work there?
Uh, generally, no. When you're, you go through the hiring process, you're offered a job, you have to accept the job application. I mean, there are things for an actual emergency where we can temporarily move people, or if you're a magistrate, you can move. But, um, it, generally, no. They have to accept the job at that location.
So you're having problems getting, one of your problems also is having the worker come to the place?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
It doesn't charge you?
Well, they don't wanna live in Vanceboro as well. I mean, again, that's what I was saying. It would be nice if, you know, I know we had people in the past that happened in Vanceboro, so we're here. But it's just not coming. People don't do that, don't wanna do that right now.
When you were hired and they offered you a job and they said you're going to Lubac Maine, you either went to Lubac or you didn't have a job. Is that correct?
It was Callas made for me.
Oh, no, but you were told, you were told you're going to Lubac. You either went or you didn't have a job.
That's exactly what happened.
Well, I've got a couple of suggestions in your hiring process. You know, we're looking for two officers or four officers or six officers that is willing to relocate or not smuck relocate or work in Vanceboro. The other question I had for you, would there be any chance that if the trains are gonna be able to go through here, and there's gonna be maybe some money, help pay for somebody's wages to watch the train or whatever, you got the gates up, could the two folks not sit at the building, we're closed for twenty minutes, and we'll check the trains and come back, or bicycle, it's my log tracks?
And there's lots of drivers here.
Pipe drive. If they sit for twenty minutes, knowing that that officer's coming back, that would save them a lot less fuel while the holder backed around while he's checking the train and then come back to the building. Would that be an option?
I, I mean-
Anyway, it's just, it's just a question, and something maybe you could consider, you know?
Okay, thank you. I had a- Is there something in order, you were gonna say something with that? That was a very, it seemed like it was pretty in-depth. We can look into that, sir.
What's that?
I said, we can look into the feasibility or something like that.
Mr. Gadway, um, is, is there anything that can be done to, um, increa- increase the pay and the incentives for your officers to, uh, locate up here? Because I think down in Portland, um, they make more money, don't they? Isn't there a differential pay that cuts off somewhere else?
Well, they, they're, they're, they do make more money. There's a US-based cost-of-living allowance that every region in the country is, uh, is decided, I think it's congressional, I could be wrong, but, um, maybe, it seems like a, I mean, I think it's, uh, it's congressional, but it's pre-decided, each location gets a county-based cost of living in that area. So I don't, I don't think that, that could happen.
Next question.
Mr. Gadway, one other question. I'll sit down and talk a little bit. I guess, I guess one of the things you need, you need to understand, and you're, you're committed to making a decision, God forbid, that there's a fire in St. Croix or McCadam or Vanceboro or Landville, somebody burns because of the gate up. You can't put a dollar on life and, and, you know, and if, yes, you'll have the key to that fire. Man, he can get the gate open, but in fact, it's gonna take time, and sometimes time is money. And you can't buy a life. But I hope whoever closes it or makes that decision, that this never happens as long as they're alive, because if it happens, they get offed. That's, that's something that you really gotta consider. If you got the gate up, you're driving the fire, you are not, there even know who's been on the fire. Time you get that unhooked, you get through, you know, time is money. And if there's an accident or something like that, this is very, I just want you to think of all the things. Again, if, if you would have a stakeholder, you'd hear of that.
I don't, we have, we have spoken with the, um, stakeholders. Thank you for that. Uh, one thing that we have offered, are you the fire chief?
Me.
Are you, I spoke with you on the phone, and I don't, I know Bonnie's worked with you. So we have offered, uh, to run training exercises to, you know, to make sure that, you know, you're as fast as, as, as you can be during off-hours. And we did the same at Milltown. So, uh, you know, we're hoping it's rather quick to get that gate open.
But Mr. Gadway, I gotta tell you, you're coming with a fire. Any, any of the other officers that go on, and I'm sure there's Mrs. Holmes and her scene coming, they just wait, where you go. But when you're stopped, you got to get going, and it's, and I said, time is money, and time is essence. So it doesn't matter how good a key, frozen up, it's winter time, lobs freeze, you know, like, anything can happen. If somebody loses their lives, I hope it never happens. But if they do, somebody's gonna burn out soon.
Uh, while I'm standing, I just wanted to say something. I'm sorry. I am the fire chief in Vanceboro, and Mr. Gadway reached out to me and asked me about a place to hold a meeting in Vanceboro, uh, long before other people were talking about. So, they did initiate this meeting.
We won't debate that tonight.
If this, uh, if this may follow up, why have to be a meeting?
Gene, I didn't, Gene, I didn't say that. I said it's supported from all levels of benefit, including locally. So I did not say it was made by a, I said, everybody has to approve it all the way up. But I am the port director here in Callas, and I'll accept responsibility for what happens. That's, that's the end. I mean, that's what it is.
How come the public has never notified, or if they were, who would notify?
The public was notified, ma'am. We-
We were notified after we saw all those trucks and machines and everything down there, spending, uh, how much money? Um, putting up their gear on. Uh, quite a bit of money put up their things, even before we knew of. That's how we kind of found out about it. And, uh, you're asking, you're, when you ask a citizen to do a job that, you're not, what year is that, is it doing? Are you gonna pay him the same rate you pay figuring overtime and travel time and that to go down and all that?
I'm not sure. Are you asking a question or just comment?
Well, I was just kind of a comment. And another thing about people living here, didn't there, it used to be, what, you know, hardship ports, and you got some sort of, I don't know, financial help to buy a, to buy a home or to kind of overs, uh, uh, cover your family, you decided to live in Callas, what your, your station is here. Wasn't there a hardship?
Folks, quiet, please. Let him answer.
So, uh, Gene, thanks for the question. Uh, yes, there used to be a, a program with INH before we went to CBP. So, uh, you're talking a long time. Go back, um, with the agency that you and I started with. Uh, but that was, uh, two thousand and three, we went to customs and border checks, and they didn't carry that program over with it. So there's not a hardship, there's not hardship ports anymore like there used to be.
Okay, who's next?
Is there gonna be any exceptions, like, you're looking twelve hours, maybe, uh, six hours, eight hours, or twelve hours of this, and that's what it is?
And an exemption or?
Is there gonna be any exceptions, like, summer, we live here, the winter, winter goes down, everybody knows. Summer, we've got friction going through, we've got the safety order, we're gonna spend a late. So why are people here?
Yeah, so I, I keep, everybody's talking about, you know, if everybody, people being affected, and I'm, I'm not disagreeing that they are, they're doomed down, that any exception hours has to happen. But the, the traffic data is, is not, it's seven cars every twelve hours. So it may have a little seasonal fluctuation. I haven't seen it in any extreme like you're talking about. So I don't believe we're gonna say it's open and, uh, it's not reduced hours in, you know, May or June or anything like that. Certainly, if there was, uh, data to support that, we'd look at it, but I don't think it's out there.
I think, uh, Canadians, customs, thinking about within the riot man, if that happens and, and people get trapped, because I know a lot of people that don't know how to use that.
Yeah, so again, our, the data we use, we knew that when the data was skewed. We used two thousand seventeen through two thousand nineteen, which were the three years prior to the pandemic number. Absolutely. It hasn't even come close to returning to those numbers was really low in the yields.
I think if a riot hand was down, though, I know a lot of people that we have done a lot of their applications to get across. Uh, I think about what's been, I think- I think if that was lifted, I think a lot of people would be proud of it. And that would have kept them.
Okay, anybody else? That man right there with the hat? Please speak up.
My cross, this is customs here, they go 200 times a year and log trucks. And they'll have to haul, clear the same seat, clear the back of the stop truck. They don't have a bus to cover to get over. Fuel, the six dollars a gallon, that's a parent. They love their expense. It wouldn't only worth so much money.
Thank you, sir. Those are the. He, he said that he crosses the border 200 times a year hauling his log trucks. And this is going to represent a terrible hardship, having to go around the long way, very expensive with gas. That was his point. Mr. Gadway, Mr. Kilbride has made a pretty good suggestion and he's spoken about.
And also, Chris Young, lady here, had a question.
It seems to be an awful hard talking about money, money, money. Was there a committee activated to see how much money they could save if they closed for, for somebody?
No, there's not.
Who does target do? Target action.
Like I told you, like I mentioned before, different variations of the same question. And, you know, I don't know if you guys don't want the answer or not, but the, it's responsibility of the port directors to efficiently, effectively run the ports. And we were tasked, we were tasked with doing that, constantly evaluating. There was, a few years ago, several port entries were reduced operations, reduced hours of operations, excuse me. And at that time, Vansboro was one that has significantly low traffic. We have the data, we put the numbers together, we use the 2000 through 17, the 2019 numbers. If you want to use more recent numbers, it's much smaller, but it's seven vehicles per 12 hours and 0.6 vehicles. So you're crossing 200 times a year during those hours, that's probably, that's probably you mostly because 0.6 gets you about that. That's, that's what we have for crossing. So it's a responsibility of managers of the government to review operations in CVP and that's what we're tasked with. We're accountable, not only to the people in Vansboro, but to the public of the United States to efficiently, effectively run our.
Where will this money go? We're going to save on Vansboro.
Well, it's not that we're saving money, ma'am. We're reallocating resources to where there's traffic. So we're hoping that the staff.
They don't have to hire somebody after they're here at night. They're willing to save money.
I'm sorry?
They will be saving money. They don't have anybody here for eight hours, whatever.
So we're going to keep it the same staff here in Vansboro. It's just they're going to work different hours and they'll work when, when the trains are there and when the traffic is busiest. And then we're hoping that we won't have to staff from Calis every day as well.
All I was going to say, and then I'll pick up on that. Mr. Gadway, wouldn't it be possible to get together with people like Mr. Kilbride, the paper company in Woodland, the folks at McCadam, the mayor, our select people? And just do a little bit more stakeholder information before any formal decision is made? I mean, that's a reasonable request, so I'm making it. Would you be willing to do that?
We'll have to work with you on that. I'll get back to you. I don't know exactly what it's all about. I don't know exactly what the details are, but certainly.
The reason I raised it was there seems to be new information coming forward that, I mean, I didn't know about it. A lot of people didn't know the extent of what's happening in St. John. And I think those corporations who are investing the hundreds of millions of dollars and the Canadian government and others, we want to make sure that your agency has the full picture. That's all.
Well, thank you for that. If you notice what I spoke, I did mention the portfolio increase in rail traffic. We were aware of that. So I know you're moderating questions. I don't know if anybody else has any extra words. We're near the end of our time.
Okay. They want to go home, folks. What's your question, sir?
I could just say one more thing. It appears that a lot of decisions are made on stats. And they, and they are, whether it's a company decision or a corporate or government. I think this is a unique situation where probably there should have been some more public and corporate consultation on the front end. And some of these trends that have been going downhill, as Ken and John mentioned, they're, they're obviously coming probably faster than any of us realize. The trend is already there on the rail traffic because it has been increasing for a number of years. But the curve could, I guess my fear is, once it closes, how are we going to get it reopened? You know, all the trains in the world, are they going to fix the farm, all the automobile traffic? So I guess, should we be back to the corporate and private consultation or is it too late for that? Because I'd be all in, I think a lot of people in this room would agree that if we can save this thing, it's probably not too late maybe, you know? And I just hope that, that somebody would reconsider that. I think that's why we're all here. We see that a decision probably has been made, but we'd like to know how we're going to reverse it.
I think I can answer to that, sir. And when you talked about the rail, the expansion of the rail, I think what Mr. Gadway has said. I want to bite your spoon. Is that good? All right, there we go. So to your question there, I think Mr. Gadway's touched on it quite a few times, but what he's trying to say is the reallocation of those resources are geared towards the growth of the rail. So that's, those resources are just going to go somewhere else. It's just that we're going to focus those resources in different hours more towards the rail. And to talk about, if there is the boom, like the mayor said, we see these, we see a lot more traffic coming through, I think the benefit here is that we can reevaluate. And that's the thing, you know, this is, you know, ebbs and flows. So this is never a static, completely done. If something were to change, then, you know, Mr. Gadway and CVP would, we would absolutely reevaluate. I think that, that's the key thing here, is that we're reallocating those resources because we do see those trends and we're trying to react appropriately. Hope that answers.
I have a question. I'm a little confused. Like if the doors closed over here, I didn't quite understand that. Does that mean if I'm over here and I can't get back to McCadam? If I'm past, you close the gate, the gate, so I can't even get, I can't get back into Canada? Like, I don't understand why that gate has to work out.
The port's heartening construction is to. Security of the port, yes. But I think that, you know, again, Canada Border Services hours are, you know, a separate issue from our, it's something I can't speak about.
So we couldn't get through them? That's what I'm saying. Like, say if I come over and I'm visiting Cindy and Gertie and I now have to watch the clock, like, okay, oh, it's eight o'clock, I got to get back into McCadam before you close the gate because I can't even get through there to go to the Canadian customs. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor Staniks, and sir, I'll recognize you. And then one more question and we'll wrap it up.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to barge the time here. But I would like to make one more comment. Once you shut something down, and I've been, I've been in senior government positions, and when you shut things down, it's very difficult to get it fired up again. If we start firing in McCadam, and I hope I will, and I hope we will, and, you know, everything's a gamble, but we think it's going to work. We've been talking to companies that are re-interested and I wouldn't make those statements if they weren't true. Are they going to sign on the dotted line? Boy, I don't know, but I'm going to make it as tempting as possible to have them come. But northern Vansboro, if you can't get over there to do the job, you're going down through Calis, you're not going to have the numbers anyway going across the border. Because you won't get the 24/7 jobs. And therefore, the numbers will never reflect the true reality of what you could have had here if they'd left the border. Having said that, there's another way out of this potentially, and I'd like you to think about it. Put a moratorium on the decision for three, five years. Give us the opportunity to show you that we can increase the traffic coming back and forth across the border. In four or five years, if it doesn't pan out, okay, then we got to go back and we get a lot of chance. But when I tell you here that we have growth that's going to be occurring, not only with the rail efficiency, but with the traffic that's going to be coming across, I suspect that to be true. If it does come to fruition, I'd hate to have to come back and fight tooth and nail to get jobs for people in Vansboro and bring people back and forth across the border. That's all, I'll be in there.
This is going to be my last question. If there's any other one, I'll prepare. I guess it's, it's a three-point question.
I think your last was a good one. Three questions. Well played, sir.
The Brochew family that owns Vansboro, they own a new brand, and they just opened a brand new settlement in Westbury. Is that anyone else there? You're dependent on the road or you got to do that? And like I said, this is a choice. I asked them to be here tonight and it was the worst time ever to have a meeting, the day after the fourth, and God guides my application, but the time, it was always never a good time, I understand that. But I really think if, if you had, if you had a way to staff it or if you looked at other ways to entice members to come here, to work here. And when I say they shut the commercial port down, I'm talking like when our Jiprock trucks used to come over here, they could control a waste manifest or give a manifest a go. Well, now they got to go to Calis or Hope. We might admit, the Westbrook might have thrown in, certain team might shut the mill down in McCadam, but that's a reload center. That's, they're the same. So they're still running down the road. If we could do a waste manifest over here and get that commercial traffic, then your numbers would come up. So when I say that, when you stop that, all that commercial traffic and force them to go other, this is what rolled in numbers down. It's like Mayor Staniks is saying. So if there's, you know, if there's time to maybe relook at things, you have an officer there, computers, it doesn't matter where you're at, you should be able to do any. Now, mind you, I can show you when you camp back and try to go dog and inspect it, if it's furniture, whatever, but there's certain things that you can handle it. I understand that. It just seems like the will of doing commercial business isn't there. And you need all this to accomplish, right? So anyway.
Okay. And Mr. Kilbride, I'm going to trust you to follow up with the port director and see if you can get something rolling with the meeting. Sir, I thought, I saw your hand up and this will be the last.
Yeah, I just had questions for the crowd. I'm Shane Fowler with CVC, but I'm just throwing it out there because I, maybe I don't recognize you, but is there any MPs or ALAs from the Canadian side here? Any elected officials other than Mr. Staniks? And I'm curious if, if I could get a show of hands, who here is from the Canadian side tonight? Okay? And just based on what you heard tonight, is there anybody here that is leaning towards or is okay with the decision of reducing the hours?
No.
No.
There's nobody here that? All right, thank you very much.